The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
I'd like to call the April 26 Town Council meeting to order and ask everyone to rise to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to move that we suspend the rules to change the order of the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstentions. I'd like to move that we move items New Business F1 and F2 up in the agenda to immediately follow public comments.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you very much. Our next order of business is a proclamation tonight. And I apologize for the closed quarters in here, but we have an election going on today, which is, they are actually using our town council quarters, so we are up here in the conference room. So, tonight we have a proclamation that I'm going to read, and you can see what I'm... And the proclamation actually has something to do with last, it's actually last fall is the date on the proclamation. And generally, I speak about the proclamation or the person prior to when I read it. But what I'd like to do tonight is read the proclamation and then say a few words. The proclamation is whereas Kevin Adorno embodied the spirit of youthful enthusiasm, adventure, and camaraderie, and whereas over the course of two summers Kevin Adorno had undertaken his dream to ride a bicycle from Maine to Miami reminding family and friends of his motto, "Roll hard or go home." And whereas Kevin Adorno tragically lost his life while visiting Vero Beach, Florida. And whereas family and friends of Kevin Adorno had gathered in Vero Beach to memorialize his life and to complete his bicycle ride to Miami. And whereas Kevin's hometown of Farmington, Connecticut shares with Indian River County, Florida, the national designation as a bicycle-friendly community. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Town of Farmington, we hereby commend Kevin's family and friends for taking the journey from Vero Beach to Miami in celebration of Kevin Adorno's life. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this second day of September 2015. Nancy Nickerson, Chair of the Farmington Town Council. And as you're hearing, this proclamation was done in the fall, and we just never were able to present it and have the family here, and we wanted to make sure we did that. But a couple of things that I wanted to talk about, and one is, just to let everyone know that this ride that occurred from Vero Beach to Miami involved a lot of Farmington members, Farmington family and friends, and family and friends from other towns as well. It involved people from Vero Beach and from Florida. Some of those people were from Farmington. And they opened their homes, and not just their homes, but took care of people and just really welcomed people down there that were going to do this ride. And it's just, I think, an amazing showing of just what we talked about here, camaraderie and just feelings of things besides that, really love and friendship. And people were drawn to Florida to finish that ride, and that community down there, as Tanya was explaining to me, is a bicycle-friendly community. And we here in Farmington are bicycle-friendly community. And it just truly shows how small the world is and how we really are, and the lives of so many of us just cross. And whether people move away, whether people are here, there still are a lot of feelings and friendships that go on. And I just think it was an amazing outpouring of Farmington people to go down there and to open up their hands and just be a part of this. And it was quite a long ride in Vero Beach, and so we just want to recognize, and we still, Tanya will speak a minute about a bicycle-friendly day we have up here that's in honor of Kevin, and it's toward a scholarship that they now are doing at the high school.
Thank you.
Okay.
First, I'd like to introduce all the Adorno members that came here, so you can start to put faces with the names and the people most closely affected by this unfortunate tragedy. This is my mom, Helena Adorno. We all grew up on Roma Drive. My second-oldest brother, Rob, class of 2001. Class of '98, John. And John's girlfriend, Jackie. I'm Tanya, by the way, I didn't mean to interrupt myself. We have a couple of Kevin's very best friends, and sort of the reason the bike rides started, Kevin and I left Maine, decided we'd bike to a wedding together down in Maryland. And Kevin made it all the way down to Maryland to Ashley and Tim O'Connor's wedding. And so, is that everybody that's here? Oh, I'm so sorry. My dad's sister is right here, Cia Sophia, my aunt Sophia, and my dad's brother-in-law, my uncle, her husband, Cio Gdio, or Uncle Gdio. This is really a wonderful thing. I was trying to think, you know, I thought I'd spare everybody from writing a speech, because that can get a little wordy, but what really came to mind was the human connection as you started to talk about. From the moment this incident happened, our lives were turned upside down, and this sort of notion of the human connection and the power of the human emotion came to the surface for all of us, and it really kind of became highlighted for all of us, starting with the stories we got about Kevin's life. You know, we know Kevin, we knew Kevin growing up, we knew Kevin as an adult, but what we didn't know is all the relationships that Kevin created on the side. And so, starting with Kevin's life, we kept getting stories and things, and how Kevin affected people's lives. And of course, when this happened to us, the outpouring of support and human emotion and the connections that we've made throughout our lifetime in Farmington really surmounted to this huge, huge, I don't know, I think I speak for everybody, support system that we really needed, really, really, really needed. And of course, when sort of the idea to ride to the finish came out of Rob's mouth, it was just a great, great opportunity to channel sort of all of the energy, I'm going to call it an energy, good, bad, ugly, powerful, into this one amazing trip that we can sort of remember forever, finish for Kevin. And as Nancy said, the people of Vero Beach were incredible, opening their homes to us, supporting us, riding with us those first 14 miles. I think that's an event that I think we'll look back always and say, did we really do that? People rode 150 miles, did we really do that with that many people? And we did, and I think we did an amazing thing, and I think it helped a lot of people with the whole process, because what happened to Kevin is tragic, I mean, there's no other words about that. But again, going back to the human connection, this is yesterday, yet another example, we're so lucky to have grown up in Farmington, we're so lucky to have made the connections we made here. And although we know this is just a piece of paper and it might collect dust on a wall, we really, really, really appreciate you guys taking the time to recognize Kevin and to recognize the Farmington community that helped us make this happen, because that's what happened. So, and moving forward, I guess now's a good time to thank everyone, because I don't, I think we were exchanging only via email about the first annual Kevin Adorno Memorial Ride that took place last year. Kathy, in your office, and everyone with the town that helped make the Adorno Ride happen last year, that inaugural event, everyone was going, what's going to happen? It really was a home run, it was awesome. Again, a year after year, a way to tribute Kevin, and really sort of cater to the activity and wellness of this community, using Kevin and Kevin's spirit, Kevin's playfulness. And we have the next one coming up in a couple weeks, May 14. And that, oh, another announcement is that the Kevin Adorno Memorial Fund did officially become a nonprofit. And so, year after year now, we are going to be able to give, we already have our first scholarships going out to FHS graduates this year, two $1,500 scholarships, which is a pretty great thing to have accomplished in the first year. And we're hoping to start a few other programs for kids, with this event being sort of our big event each year. And so, Jackie brought some wristbands, we do hope you guys can come down and sort of capture Kevin's essence, which we're trying to do with this day. None of the events are timed, we have a festival with arts, music, festivities...
All those Farmington bands.
Yeah, Farmington talent playing, I mean, it's just a truly Farmington community event, because we all are very, very proud, including Kevin, very proud to be from here, and to have grown up here, and to have made the connections we made here. So, thank you so much for this, and for having us here today.
And for helping us out with the police last year.
Yeah, oh yeah. Thank you.
And we can take those and distribute them after.
Yeah, distribute them after, sure.
That'd be great.
I'll have to see you there.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will see you on the May 14th, too.
Yes, you will. Okay. Thank you so much. Kevin?
Sorry for this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. No. The wristband is to get you into the festival.
Okay, great.
Sorry, I didn't say that, I didn't clarify that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Kids only, ten free.
Oh, okay.
I know, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I recognize you. Oh, thank you. Beautiful, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Our next order of business is public comment. If anyone would like to address the council, please give your name and address. All right, moving on.
Okay, so we've got the new business, as we moved up, so we're at Agenda Item F1. I'd like to move that we award bid number 244, Farmington Avon Live Fire Training Facility Concrete Work, to bidder number one, Los Aldeas of Durham, Connecticut, at a contract cost of $98,910.
Second.
The purpose of this motion is to award the contract to undertake the concrete work at the Farmington Avon Live Training Facility. So bids were open on April 19, and two bids were received, and this is the low bid. We're really, Rich Higley, the chief, and Mary Ellen are here, just to, they're real, everyone's very, very excited.
Do you want to come sit down?
You're good. And it's, we, this is the last two parts of it we were waiting for, we've gone out to bid a couple of times, different ways, so we would be under budget or on budget, and thanks to Joe in the finance, because they, we've done quite, they've done quite a bit of work in Avon to make sure this would work, and it's finally coming together, and this is the last bid, I think, the last two bids, and the building is coming, why don't you let everyone know? Mary Ellen or...
June 3rd is the ship date, that's the biggest ship, too.
So the building's coming, and this is the concrete that's underneath the building, that's how it works. And maybe sometime if anyone wants to take a quick tour up there to see what's going on, there has been work up there, the water line has been put in, some different things, Avon's crews have been out there clearing and some different things, and so we're really, really excited. You're planning on having a grant opening sometime in the fall?
That's where we're going, so that's where it's at.
Congratulations.
Could you speak a little to the grant, and what, I mean, at the bottom it says that we have the LOSAP program and the state grant, do you know any details about that at this point, or, Joe, could you speak to that a little?
Mary Ellen can speak to one of the grants, and I can speak to the LOSAP. The LOSAP was the money the town receives, an allocation the town receives each year from the state of Connecticut. And the council talked about this, actually, almost two years ago now, and the council appropriated $150,000, we applied that through our LOSAP program. So we put the application in, the application's been approved, the money's ready to go. And then Mary Ellen, I guess, applied her grant through Economic and Community Development, state of Connecticut, and has received $200,000, minus $5,000.
Exactly, $200,000, but the state pays itself $5,000 to administer the grant to us, so our $200,000 grant is actually a $195,000 grant aid from the state of Connecticut, which was really the last key we needed to get the money in place to get the whole project done. So thanks to Joe's creative bidding, the fact that we finally got the numbers and everything lines up, the budget looks good, and we're on target.
Great. Any questions?
So, the low bid was considerably under the next low bid, is there any concern about that?
No, it was deemed a very responsible bidder, we checked references, we talked to him, and we had two different people from town talk about the scope of the project, and he understood the project.
Yeah, actually, the higher bidder was probably way out of line. He actually bid two other bids that we had do the same week, and he was actually higher on both, much higher on both of those.
He's consistent.
He's consistent.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstentions. I move to award bid number 245, Farmington Avon Live Fire Training Facility Building erection, to bidder number one, Owl Rose Construction of North Branford, Connecticut, at a contract cost of $228,000.
Second.
Again, we opened the bids on the same day, and we had two bids, and this is the low bid, and Mary Ellen and the committee vetted their references and are recommending that we go with them, and this is, again, the last, I think, bid for the building to have it built.
And is it the same, I mean, the LOSAP grants, the same, just applying for them?
Right, basically, between the LOSAP grant, $150,000, and $195 from DECD, we both will apply to those, to these two bids. Both of those, the reason why we're doing that is both of those bids do have state requirements, certain state requirements, and these are the two contracts that most easily fit to the state requirements, that's why we're using these grants for that, for this purpose.
Great. Thank you.
We appreciate you guys putting it on the agenda today, we know we don't usually do that, but it was important that we keep it moving, so we just opened them up and we were ready to go, so I think it's going to be great, and like I said, if anyone wants a tour, just let me know, and we can coordinate with Mary Ellen, you guys can come up and see what's happening during the process.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, congrats.
Okay, consideration of special topics, the webpage presentation, done.
All right. Well, this is a long time coming for this presentation, so I'm excited to be here tonight to go through this with you. First, I'd like to start off by thanking the committee that we had put together with Councilor John Bibber, Erica Robertson, and Brian Rush. The four of us met several times over the last 15 months, and went through this process step by step. So what we thought we would do is put together a slideshow of the actual process that we went through, how we got from the beginning to where we are today, and then we'll follow it up at the end with an actual live demo of the website, some key parts of the website, which we are hoping to go live with next week.
Oh, great. Well, this is very exciting, we've been looking forward to this.
Yeah, so we would like for your feedback, you know, it's going to be some, not a full-on presentation, but somewhat of a little bit of a workshop, if there's anything when we're going over the live part of the website and you want to provide some feedback, we would appreciate that. So we'll start off with this quick slideshow here. The charge of committee, as it says, was to review the Town of Farmington webpage and recommend improvements to enhance public services. So we put together the committee in 2014, and like I said, met a few times, it was geared towards the strategic goals of the town manager. And so we, let's go over the timeline here. We met, had our first meeting on January 13, where we came up with what it was that we wanted to come out of this website. We developed the goals that we were going to put into the RFP that we would put out to the bidders, and we had about 10 stripped, I don't know, items, criteria, yeah, items criteria, that we really wanted to show up on, in these RFPs for this website. So those went out in March. We received 16 responses in April, and narrowed that down to three top vendors. And then out of those three top vendors, we went with Vision Internet out of California. From there, we worked with them to go over the outline, the wireframe of the website, and you'll see all of these in the slides coming up. We approved it, and then we went into the work over the last, I guess, about six months or so, developing the, all the internal pages, and then populating it with data, which is a lot of work. There's a lot of data in a municipal website, so, and you can't, it's not just copy and paste. So one of the things that we wanted to do was basically kind of start over from scratch, because over time, things can get out of control and intertwined with each other, and so we used this opportunity to kind of start almost like zero-based budgeting, where we started from the beginning, and we built everything up correctly, which takes us to where we are today, showing you the preview of where we're at. So, that's a quick timeline. The goals and objectives here, I won't read through each of these, but I'll just highlight on a couple of them. One of the things that we wanted to, we talked about ease of use with this website, and not just ease of use for employees here at Town Hall, but ease of use for residents as well. And we don't, you know, we tried to identify who the users of this website are. They're going to be residents of the Town of Farmington, but they're also going to be people from out of town who may be looking to move into the Town of Farmington, or businesses who may be looking to do business in the Town of Farmington, so we really tried to go and design a webpage that was easy for multiple different types of people to use. So one of the things that we wanted to do was come up with a calendar. The calendar of events needed to be easily usable for the residents and tied into, the best term, I'm looking for like relationships is what we call it in databases. It needed to be tied to multiple parts of the website, where, like, let's say you're looking at the agenda for tonight's council meeting, or the calendar item for tonight's council meeting. We wanted to tie the agenda to that calendar item, so that if you're on that calendar item, the agenda's right there, whereas now you've got to kind of sift through about five different layers to find the agenda. And then we also wanted you to be able to look at past events and find the minutes for tonight's council meeting, that's just an example. But at the same time, we also have a lot of groups and organizations in town, and we wanted them to be able to use the calendar option as well, and make it easy for them to submit their activities and then have that show up on our calendar. So you'll see down, a couple slides down, how we incorporated that. Online services was a big one as well. That includes tax payment, land records, property records, GIS, looking up that stuff. And we really wanted to make it as intuitive and easy as possible for residents to get to what they're looking for. So those are just a couple of the highlights of the goals and objectives there. We went through the RFP process, you know, seek proposal from qualified vendors, had a couple of scopes, one was to create the graphical design, we wanted a modern, cutting-edge looking website, and then we also wanted one that was responsive to mobile design. Everything's mobile now, we all probably use our mobile phones more often to look at websites than we do our desktop computers. Google Analytics proves that theory, over 50% of traffic to most websites these days are coming from mobile phones and tablets. So this thing needed to work on mobile phones, and that was a big part of the RFP process, having that included. So scope one was the graphical design and layout, it provided a framework for consistent intuitive navigation, so that information can easily be found by the public who may not understand the organization of municipal government. Again, we wanted it very easy to get from, to find what you're looking for, we were kind of, less than three clicks was our goal, really, two clicks is the goal. So we worked hard on that. We wanted it to be easily updated, maintained, and administered by town staff. Basically, you don't want a stale website, as soon as the website goes stale, it's no longer useful. So one of the main goals was to make it easy for, you know, laypeople to be able to keep the content updated, fresh, have people keep coming back to the website, and then of course be able to advertise what's going on in town easily. So that was a big one, was making sure the town staff was able to easily update this through the content management system. And again, I mentioned, we wanted as few clicks as possible, within three clicks, so we really focused on that. Second scope was the design and deployment, a lot of the boring backend stuff, that's very important, that most people don't see, ADA compliant, we wanted it ADA compliant, meaning that people with screen readers or any of that such would be able to read the website just as easy as people without screen readers. Needed modern programming code, which helps with search engine optimization and just also expandability. Like I said, working on mobile phones, responsive web design, responsive web design, we wanted it working on just as well on mobile phones and tablets as it did on desktops. We wanted consistency, so that everything was intuitive, each menu, if you were in one menu, it would be the same as in a different menu. And then premium search functionality, we wanted to be able to, we want an end user, because we don't, we don't know what they're looking for or how they're going to act, we want them to be able to search, type in, you know, basic language to find what they're looking for. The PDFs will be indexed, meaning that the actual text that's in the PDF file will be indexed for search, so if you're looking for something on the website, and that information is in the PDF file, you should be able to find it, which is not always the case. So those are just some quick highlights there. So through the RFP process, we had 16 responses received, we were down to the top three, which was Vision, Albatros, and Revise. Revise was our current vendor, so we decided that we were going to try somebody new, ultimately selected Vision, and the criteria that's laid out there is kind of what we based our decision on. So we did our due diligence with this, to say the least. So Vision Internet was selected to build a new webpage, they specialize in website development since 1995, they've created over 600 websites for local government, we looked at several of those websites, probably close to a dozen of, we asked them for their showcase pieces, and said we wanted to be their next showcase piece, so they were, we were very happy with their designs. And then, this was, this is it, what do you think? So, just kidding. This is a wireframe, so this was, this is just what they give you for a basic layout, and from this wireframe, we took and adjusted and modified what we thought was important. We wanted, right up front and center, we wanted current news, meetings, and events, because we thought that's what people were going to the website to look for. We have an in-the-spotlight section, which is...
You want to go up there?
No, I'm okay, yeah. I mean, I'm, no, I don't think you'll go up there. Yeah, in the spotlight section on the left side there, we'll highlight kind of what's going on now, cleanup day, anything that's going on in town, and then popular links. So from the wireframe, we came up with a final design, and now, this design looks a little funny on a slide, which is why we decided to do a live demo at the end, because it's condensed down, but this is the final design for the homepage, kind of condensed down. When we move into the live site, you'll see it'll outline a little bit different, but we wanted to kind of show you and compare how clean you have, what you have here versus what...
If I can find it.
Well, that's nice and large.
Yeah, that, like I said, the slide doesn't do it justice.
That's the old site.
So this is the old site, and you'll see if you scroll down, it just kind of goes on and on, and it's very easy to get lost in there. Navigating this is a bear, and it's just, you know, there's a lot of information in a municipal, municipality, it just has a lot of information from a lot of different angles. And so, we really tried hard to get that navigation piece down in the new site, to make it easy to get to. So I think what we'll do now, oh, yeah, we, the last couple of months, the town staff was trained on populating the new website with all... with all of this information. And they were trained on the CMS, the content management system. And really, that's, that's the meat and potatoes of, of the product that you have to offer. How much you put into it is how much you're going to get out of it. You know, there's another database term, PGO, garbage in, garbage out. And, and it's true. What you put into it is what you're going to get out. And our town staff, I just want to commend Erica and Brian and Kathy and everybody underneath. They really stepped up to the plate and did, went above and beyond and really populated this thing. So much that Vision Internet was so impressed with what our town staff did, that they, they want to use our site as a model for future clients. And they said, they said, "What we have done here in Farmington is not done in most other municipalities." And that, you know, they were, they were really impressed with what we did. And they, they do plan to use us as a model for future clients, which, you know, I think you guys should give yourself a pat on the back for that, so. So, with that, we have, uh, we'll just take you through a couple of the, a couple of highlights here. We'll show you the front page layout.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, it's a really nice design. We tried to capture the essence of Farmington, used soft colors. And of course, we can update photos. We, you know, we plan on taking some photos once we get some leaves. And we'll, and we'll update those and populate them through the page and splash them out throughout the page. But again, we really, we wanted "in the spotlight", right front and center there, or front and left, I should say, but, and then, "current news, meetings, events, popular links." These are all very easy clickable items that will take you to what's going on currently quickly. Yeah, and it's real easy to get to. The, the calendar and the meetings and events, that section there, a lot of thought was put into that. You know, John, I'll, I'll let you speak for a second on what you offered up, because it's actually one of the better features of the site, that's-
You know, one of the things, would be, I've, this is a problem that I've run into for years now. We're different organizations in town trying to plan their events, and they all seem to want to have it on the same weekend, or the same Tuesday, or whatever. You know, I just went to a Land Trust meeting last Thursday, it was the same day as UVIA was meeting. And so, those sort of things happen routinely. And every once in a while, somebody said, "Well, we should really get together and do something like this." But what we've done here is set up a event section, so that groups in town can submit to the town their events in an automated fashion. We can approve it here, and then it'll automatically be put up to our events page. So that all other community organizations will know what you've planned. You know, and sometimes it may happen in time for them to redirect their times, maybe not. But at least, it'll give them the opportunity to coordinate the calendars between the different organizations. At the same time, it obviously gives the general public a way to find out what's going on in town. And so, the Exchange Club is, is holding a wine tasting, you can go out here, and go out here in automated fashion. And it doesn't have to collide with somebody else's event. So, we don't have that continuing confusion in that.
So, is there going to be some sort of major effort to let the organizations know they should be doing that, or they can do that?
Yes.
It'll probably be a slow effort, you know, a slow buildup, until we get fully populated and aware by everybody, yeah.
Yeah, when we get up, up to speed and where we have our, you know, we feel stable, we will get that out, out to the organizations.
Absolutely, our goal.
Yeah. It's a big deal, though, because, you know, as a member of multiple other organizations, we do run into this all the time. I know that the policeman's ball was falling on the same night as the fireman's thing, or-
And the same night as a library thing.
And the same night as the Exchange Club's comedy event. And so, there's been a lot of coordination behind the scenes to try to make that, so that that doesn't happen. But the big thing here that John, you know, said is that these organizations will be able to go in themselves and, and submit their own events. And then, they'll go into a queue, so they won't show up immediately. That way, we don't have, you know, any-
E-mail.
Yeah. You know what I'm saying. So, anyway, it'll be, it'll go into a queue, and then, once, and then it's a click of a button. If it's approved, it's on the calendar.
Well, that's great. So, individual organizations can do that.
Yes.
Wow.
Yes.
Right, so we'll have a person here at Town Hall who's, has the approval abilities for these events. They'll get funneled in electronically, and it pushes a button, the calendar gets either updated or not.
Which puts the onus on the, the group.
Right.
And puts the work on the group, and we just have to say yay or nay. So, it helps, you know, we're not burdened by everyone's calendar events, they can do it themselves.
Kathy?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, one of the things that I learned, and I haven't been that involved in, these guys have done an excellent job, is that something as simple as that was really, this was a major thing. And it wasn't like you just say, "Let's just do a calendar," and it has to work. And being in municipality, and my concern was, again, what was going on this calendar, and who was approving what was going on or not going on, because it's a public calendar. And there's really, for this entire website, there's just so many layers that you've learned. And these guys, you know, Brian and committee members, really, the town staff over the last couple of weeks have been just, hands down, everyone's working on the webpage here in this Town Hall right now, really just populating everything. And then, I think, once it gets up and running, which, again, I keep on saying to Brian and everyone that, "Let's not get crazy, let's, you know, we can transition this, we'll get it up and running." And it's that now, people can change it all the time, so it's not like it's there and it's never, we can never change it. Then, we can start letting the community know, we can start letting people know how to do it. And so, I think it's really been a great, great job for you guys.
Yeah, so, it, a lot of work to populate this thing, for sure. So, other, other things, you know, the current news is, Brian has up there right now. Like I said, "in the spotlight" is a great feature. One of the things, um, simple, simple English "how do I?" So, a lot of people, you know, we, we can't anticipate who's coming to the site and what they're looking for. So, we tried to, tried to have a, you know, a link here where "how do I?" in plain English, and then, find what you're looking for right there.
That's great.
It's kind of like the top 20 questions we get, really, you know?
Yeah.
Well, when I look at that, that's all the stuff-
That's an appropriate one for today.
Yes, that, that's what I was looking at.
Exactly.
But anything, you know, licenses and-
Yeah. Again, we tried to make it so you, one click and you're in, finding what you're looking for right away. Whereas before, you, you know, you wouldn't know, you might not necessarily know that you need to go to the register or voters to get an absentee ballot. Because somebody, a resident might not even have ever heard of a register or voters. We all know it, but, you know, or a town clerk. Nobody might, you know, so, we really tried to put it front and center, plain English, where you don't have to know anything about municipalities to find what you're looking for.
Right, and now you know where- And now you know where to go when you have a Black Bear sighting.
I think some of the benefit to this, too, is, you know, we're going to have Google Analytics sitting behind this, so that, you know, we can take a look at this six months from now and say, "Hey, you know, we have these five things up here that nobody ever clicked on. Let's, let's change those out, and let's put something else in that, that might get more attention."
Yeah.
And you may find that there are a couple of things people ask you and say, "Hey, why can't we have, you know, this, this, I think this might," just, just because, in a few months, you know, you're working through it.
Right, and then, any feedback like that, and that's the beauty of this, is it's expandable and updatable and adaptable.
And the benefit to this should be that it frees up staff time, so they're not answering the same question 20 times a week, right? So, they have room to do other things.
Right, so, they get the same question 20 times a week, they're putting it right up there, in the spotlight.
Right, and we can do it, correct? That's like the whole thing.
Yes, absolutely.
So, if we want, in a month, half of these questions no one ever asks, and we can change and have 10 new questions up there.
Brian will show us a little bit in a few minutes about how that works.
Yeah, I will dig into the, into the CMS itself, which is the content management system, the backend of it. So, we got FAQs up there. We're working on formatting of these, so, there, but, um, basically, these are common questions that are, that come into these departments, and hopefully, people, you know, will, will be able to get their answers through the website rather than through the telephone, so.
This would be something I should, would think we should put out in the newsletter.
Yeah.
To make sure that people are now aware that there's this, that this is out there.
Yep. One of the things that we wanted to, that we focused on being in town government, was the agendas, minutes, and the organization of those, and the prominence of them, and how to get to them. So, there's multiple ways of getting to all the minutes and agendas for the different departments, whether it's directly from the, from the division, the department portion of the website, or from the calendar, or from just a straight-up minutes and agendas page, which has all of them on one page.
On the calendar page.
Or the calendar page, which has all of them in one spot. So, we really, we tried to make it organized. We're still working on the formatting a little bit, we're going to make some changes, just to clean it up a little bit. But, uh, the general idea is that you really should be able to find these pretty quick, without much effort. So, and I think you'll see as you tool through it, that there are multiple ways to, to get to pretty much everything on the site. So, with that, I guess if you want to jump into the CMS,
Sure.
Just give a quick overview of that. This is the backend of the website, this is what the town staff will log into and use to update and maintain the website.
So, pretty much, when everybody logs into this, what they get is a dashboard, and they can see what web, what webpages they've modified, what they need to publish. This is showing me what blog content people have, people sometimes work on pages and they don't save them. So, it blocks that content, so if somebody's editing something, somebody else can't go in and edit on top of them. But pretty much, the, the main thing of this is, you know, people being able to go in and edit their own webpages. This, just down, these graphs down here kind of just show us how many documents we actually have on the website. And right now, we have 832 documents, we have 200 and-
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six pages. A little more than the 150 we originally started.
We actually, we actually took a lot of- They only did 50 pages for us, so we did-
We took a lot of pages that existed, like, the town clerk's page had a really long page of text, and we broke those up into all little sections, so that, you know, there's a separate page for marriage licenses and dog licenses now, where you don't have to scroll through this long list to try to find what you want to get to.
Much more efficient.
So, what I'm going to show you is easily how this news works, just as an example, how easy it'll be for departments. So, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go back to my dashboard. I'm going to come here and I'm going to create a news event. And I'm just going to add the news item here. And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to assign this to "workworks." I'm looking, I'm looking at all this tests, just so you can- And what I have the option to do from right here is, the mouse didn't lock up on me.
No matter how technically advanced we use the things we get.
Always the battery.
Hey, it happened to Bill Gates, too.
Just do one from the other around here.
Really, the batteries that just died, huh?
Yeah, I think so.
No one ever turns off the, the mouse, right, and that's why they die, right?
The newer ones are smarter, to go to sleep, but-
Isn't that something?
So, what I'm going to do now is, I'm just going to assign this to, let's say if I wanted to make, say if the successor had something that was due on a certain date, they could put it in here, mark it as a news item for their office, and they could then also say, "display this on the homepage." And once we save and publish that, it now shows up right on the first, front page, and it would also show up under their department page. Theirs is over here, this test item here.
And if we get really fancy someday, and have like a Facebook page or something, we could, we could send this out to, you know, four or five different areas all at once with just a few clicks, where we could send our information to people, so.
So, you know, our thought kind of is, these news items, like, day-to-day kind of stuff that we have on the main page. Right now, we have on that main page where it's a big, long list, is that people in different departments can create a quick news event, and then post it on their page, and post it on the homepage if it's something that's important, that you, you know, they feel should be on the main page.
So, and because it's the internet, we should show them some puppies.
This is our favorite page. But also, it's, it's a good example of the staff, Morocco Assistant Town Clerk. She was able to change-
That's mine.
That's Paula's grand dog.
Oh, there's Daisy.
But, so, to give you an idea, we'll be able to splash photographs throughout the, throughout the site, which obviously adds a lot of life to it and a lot of smiles, so.
Oh, look at that. Twins.
Those are Miss Lany's dogs, we don't know who's my dog.
That's Brian's dog. Louis. Is that your? That's mine.
So, really, that's kind of a broad overview of, of the site. You know, we'll open it up to any questions, comments, concerns.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I am so curious about what the recreation page looks like. Can we, just because I have found, just personally, that to be the hardest thing in the world to do is to go through that recreation brochure and try to write a great thing.
Just in the recreation page, the way the recreation page works is, it's a third-party platform. So, it's, it's hosted by a company called, it, it's not hosted by them, we host ourselves on a server, but it's a, this software package, it's from Vermont Systems, it's called RecTrack.
Okay.
You know, and it's kind of like, it interfaces with their whole system over there. And that's why, you know, theirs kind of looks a little bit different right now. You know, I know that they were working on doing some stuff with it to try to make it a little bit more user-friendly.
Well, I love that, I'm back on the homepage, it's right up front. I mean, it's actually its own button now, whereas before, you couldn't even-
Yep, so this goes to their page, and, but pretty much, when you go back over here to your online registration, it's going to kick you, it's going to kick you out of our site.
I see, okay.
You wouldn't see this normally, but it's going to kick you back. This is going to go away on it, and it's just going to be this main page here, then.
So, that's not part of our system?
No.
No, it's on, it's on a separate server where, you know, we're just doing a call to that other server to look at that page.
It's basically a third-party managed, managed information.
Because it's the online registration, we don't do that, another party does that.
But the information can't be on there?
The information should be on the, why don't you go to the recreational homepage?
We have basic recreation information, but the actual registration part of it has to take place on that, on their server.
You're saying merit that's confusing, or?
It's very difficult, because when you go to register, you're taken to, sometimes you get a PDF of the brochure, and then, you can't automatically click to register, you have to go out, register. And then, even when you're back in their registration, you know I'm talking about registered-
No, it's my call, I get annoyed at that call, Town Rec, and give them a-
It's impossible.
Because you can't find it.
You can't find the program you want to register for, it's nearly impossible.
And it's pages and pages and pages.
You have to scroll through exactly pages and pages, hundreds of possible programs by, by like eight-digit number to find them.
Sounds like something, for sure.
Isn't that something we could be trying to do?
It's something we can look into, for sure, I think so.
When people send out the number, like, when you get an email from a code sign up, and they give you the number, if you put the number in, it will work. But if you don't have the number, it's so frustrating.
You can't find your event.
No, it's, it's, it's almost-
You can't even search for, you can't even, even search for swim, or tennis. It doesn't allow that.
So, it's not user-friendly then, at all.
These dogs help you, like, working on the swim?
We'll take a look, I would say that we don't need to get into it here, but-
No, no.
As a, as a website committee, and it is part of the website, we'll, we'll meet again and we'll take a look at the specific issue.
Maybe the next thing, yeah, maybe the next part of the-
And at least identify the, the issue, and then figure out a way to resolve from there. So, I would say that's it.
Mordred for your committee.
Sorry.
You're not your result.
It's, it is never-ending.
Yeah, no, that's stuff that we need to know, so.
You know, our next, our next big, you know, endeavor will be online building permits, too.
That's what I was going to ask you, building permits, and, yeah.
We're working on that, that's a little slow, but that'll be our next big online venture.
What if you wanted, let's say, to get on TPZ Agenda or In the Wetlands, is it possible to do that online instead of coming in?
An agenda?
You mean to add, to request to get out?
Yeah, I mean, because filling out the applications online, it would save a lot of time for planning.
I mean, our, our plan is to do the whole, planning, zoning, fire marshal, building, and applying for applications. But then, you would get, you're, you're, you would get on the agenda from applying for the permit, right?
No, what I'm saying is, let's say you need to be in front of TPZ, and there's a permit you need to fill out. Now, you need to come into the office, fill it out, and pay a fee.
Yeah, that's the new system.
The new, so you'll be able to do everything online, if you can do everything online, just do PayPal, it saves a lot of time, and it saves a lot of office time, no?
That's a joke question, but, um, I love PayPal myself, and I, I don't know.
Or just, and, or any kind of, I mean, like-
I think those are all little steps we have to take.
Even getting permits. Even getting permits, permit out.
That's the whole system of that...
I, I called the office, they scan them to me, and want to get a chance of a check, like, instead of bothering someone, if I could do it and not have to bother anyone.
I think some of that will be taken care of by the new system.
Yeah, our building permits are still back from, like, the nineteen eighties.
I know.
So, that's our next, I think we're trying to take this in phases, we're gonna have this website up to date, then Erica and I are doing the building permits, I wasn't aware how difficult the rec, registration is, so, that's something that we can start, look, look at that.
Clearly, we're the ones who see them.
No, we'll absolutely let them do it, though, yeah.
You've done such a nice job that we're taking it, we're, we're... You've done such a phenomenal job, like, can you make everything work now? It's actually a compliment.
How about with the library? You know, the library's hosted, but, you know, they do their own website, and they're kind of just, they're, I think they have a WordPress website that somebody over there does.
So, when you, uh, here, you just get a link right to it, yeah.
We have a link to it, it just links out to their...
Oh, but then you can go to it, though.
Yeah.
And the schools.
Yeah, we link Farmington Public Schools from here, yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we saw that, which is great.
Because, I mean, yeah, because, again, somebody, somebody in town doesn't know that Farmington Public Schools are gonna have a different website, they're gonna think that it's town farming, and so, we want it at front and center, so if they're looking for the schools, there it is.
Good, well, that's great, because then it, you can come to this as your main website, and then go to these other things that have, I mean...
Correct, yeah, that was a main, main priority.
Oh, John, what about ease of phone numbers? I know that it's not the goal, we're trying to do it, but, very often, if you need to get ahold of, let's say, the tax assessor's office, it takes a lot of clicks to find the right number.
Yeah, you should, you should be able to get it right away in the sidebar.
John hates this icon.
Yeah, well, I don't, I just don't like the icon.
Actually, it's right here.
Which I, okay.
And it's also...
So, all right, so that's great.
So, you just went right to the town clerk and then go there?
Yeah, and the phone numbers should all be right there.
And everybody's email is there.
And that's all, it's all database-driven.
If you go to the, the, the contact page, you know, part of the...
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, because it's database-driven, the information is gonna be in multiple places, so there's multiple ways of finding this information.
Yeah, but that's good.
No, because it uses a string.
Because people have different thoughts about where they're trying to go.
Exactly, and that's exactly the thought process we had.
Well, what you're saying, and you, you said from the beginning, was to make it user-friendly, so that it's not somebody like myself, who doesn't have the background in computer, you know, a lot, but that somebody on, out, any citizen can go in and begin using it, and come to, you know, many places here.
Yeah.
Which is what we want, the ease, this seems amazing.
That's what we tried.
Oh.
And it's not easy, because there's a lot of information, and trying to organize it and manage it, and, and think outside of the box, a lot, a lot of thought went into it, so, all right.
For me, what if eight different departments all put a notice up at once on the same day, and then you've got like a...
Well, this is what happens.
Do you control for that?
I mean, we can go in there, and we can, and we can modify those kind of things, you know, we had the option to do a two-step process where, you know, somebody would enter an event, and it would have to get approved, but, somebody could edit a page, or any kind of object inside of the website, and then it would go to somebody else for approval, but I thi, I think doing it that way, for how big we are, I think most of the people in our departments are very responsible, people that are doing the stuff for that, those departments, you know, they know what they should and shouldn't be posting on the main page.
We also have at least, we have six opportunities for, you know, standing out, the east three, then three, and in the spotlight, so...
And if we feel that there's something that we need pinned at the top there, there is an option to say, "Pin this at the top," so that, you know, it stays there.
There's also an option at the very top, say, you know, we have a very bad storm again, or, you know, whatever it is, and we can throw a banner all the way on the top that says, you know...
Emergency information.
Emergency...
Oh, well, that's, that's great.
Yeah, like, school days, or, yeah, schools canceled.
Exactly, or, or, yeah, something like that, you know, we could do it if the town hall was closed for storms.
If they forget to take it off, can Brian just go take it on?
You can put expiration dates on them.
Yeah, yeah, timers.
Yeah, yeah.
My typing, no.
Keyboard's out of there.
No, yeah, batteries are out.
I think we need a supply of batteries.
This is the boardroom.
You know what, I, I think I was playing around in here, and we did it as a white cat.
John, you talked about the mobile piece of it?
Yes.
Is this gonna all look the same and work the same on the microphone?
Yes, it, it, let's put it this way, it'll be mobile-friendly.
It does, and, and we're tinkering with the idea of doing an even different mobile site, it, it takes a little more dollars for you to see what our funding looks like, where you actually, so, you could, you wanna show them that?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't listening.
The other site, the one that we dropped a data, goes into the thing, remember that? Garner, or, oh, East Hollywood, California? Eho, Eho, it's short.
Weho, was West Hollywood?
We, we, West Hollywood, Weho. So, if you, this is a site that they've just dug, you know, that, see how you go down?
And once you go to a small size, you want your icons there.
And that's, that's like what becomes your iPad or your phone, where those are your sixteen most populated or popular areas, so that now that I'm laying on my phone on the couch, I can say, "Oh, I wanna look at the calendar," or "I wanna look at contacts," and I don't have to see all that other stuff. I can if I want to, but, so we're, we're tinkering with that as a next phase, too, to, to really make it mobile. Again, we started this process almost a year ago, and this is what now they're offering their, their clients today, that piece, you know, so it's always evolving, always changing.
Yeah, but our mobile-friendly version is, is, is pretty nice, and, yeah, it's very responsive, it's, uh...
See how it, see how it moves as you go smaller?
Yeah, so it, it...
It's, it sort of shoves it down, so like, if you're on your phone, you literally see everything, you just scroll down.
It is, it is responsive.
Yeah.
So, what happens, you know, your menus now go to this little tab here, and...
And that, what you're looking at now is what it would look like on a mobile.
Yeah, no, probably, we would look like as a mobile.
Yeah, that's cool.
So...
And there's the, the thing up on top, "Town Hall is closed today."
Right. So, yeah, so, again, we're, we're very excited with how it came out.
Oh, you should be.
We're looking forward to launching it live, and all the great feedback we'll get.
And we want, we need to launch it quickly, because now we're at a point where we're double, doing our work with minutes, agendas, different things like that, so the sooner we can get this live, the easier it'll be for us as well.
Is the budget on there somewhere?
I believe that we put it, if you look at the budget referendum, I think somebody updated it today.
It's actually, yeah, I'd say.
Good.
Too quick.
Not bad.
Town meeting, recommended budget.
Very good, pretty good.
All right, so any other?
Do you know, is the, everyone at the town hall that wasn't involved, are they going through and learning, you know, gonna be able to...
Yeah, we trained, I think about twenty people across, across town, you know, we tried to get somebody in every department, and most of them picked it up really quick, and, you know, a lot, a lot of them are really excited to be in there, playing around with it, and saw, you know, the stuff that, that Tracy in the town clerk's office did, you know, Rose...
Was just working on it.
Rose has been working on it, like, constantly, you know, this is a new, you know, they, they had a lot of stuff on their, on that economic development website that was kind of outdated, and, you know, I know their, their commission has been working on what they should have out there for content, and she's gone through and, and changed a lot of that information in here, you know, one of the other things I, she probably didn't, I did, we don't, I don't think we mentioned it, but, we're kind of trying to find it, but we have a business director in our, you know, we've looked at all those businesses, you know, we, we took a look at this, this was actually, some of this content was migrated from our old site, and we're looking through it, there, if you look at it right now, there, there is some old information that we gotta weed through, and, you know, update some, with some new businesses, too.
So, the town clerk's office went through it, too?
No, well, this is, uh...
With what you, putting together their stuff, is that each office?
Yeah, every office kind of went through, and we, they, we met, we actually met with each office, and, you know, kind of talked to them about, what do you want to see on your, on the new website, and, you know, gave them ideas on what we thought they should do, and pretty much after we had the training, we got trained on, I think, March thirtieth, and so within four weeks, you know, everybody migrated all their content, we have, we have a few stragglers, but, you know, and most, most departments needed a little help in the beginning, but, once we showed them basics, they kind of took off from it.
And that's the best part about it, is that they're able to do it, like, so like Paula's dog thing, that's her idea, or her office's idea, and they, they called out for dogs, and so then they put the dogs on it, and everyone, the best part is, is that they're able to do their own sites, and keep continually get to add to it, but, it has been, like these guys have said, everyone has just been working on the webpage for the last couple of weeks, just trying to get everything updated, and getting it so they can go live, you know, May first, I think we're trying for.
May second.
May second, May second.
Well, it's, it's just such a big undertaking, I mean, like, Joe, your, the finance department, or the engineering department, or the, I mean, it's, all the information is there, but to make it user-friendly and...
And you've found most in, in every department, there's usually one or two people that are pretty computer-savvy, and they've really taken it on, and they're, they're happy to be able to do some of this stuff, and, you know, in, in our office, Cat and Deadpool are really gonna kind of be the office managers of making sure the site, and, it's, it's, there's still a lot to make sure, like, you don't want everyone putting stuff in, and then, you know, still management, we may have to come up with some policies on different things, but, you know, all of that's a work in progress.
Yeah, I mean, we still have a couple pages where, you know, we gotta go through and make sure the formatting on the, the office information all looks the same on every kind of page, because, you know, one office did it this way, and another office did it a different way, uh, you know.
Those are tweaks, though.
Yeah, yeah, final, final punchdowns, so, yeah.
And I would think, you know, you're gonna have to continue to kind of, like, the things we mentioned today, things are gonna evolve that, you know, you can, you'll have to pay attention to next.
Yeah, but we have a really good ground, ground, not a workoff of, so we should be able to...
Expand.
Expand, pretty easily.
And the other thing is, is that the departments can help with this, so it's, they have an incentive to go ahead and make their piece good, because it means that there's gonna be less calls, and, yeah, so, so, doing this right is, is an achievement that works for them.
Yeah, more efficiency, and...
Yeah.
That's great.
So, well, thank you for entertaining us.
Well, a lot to digest, but, thank you very much, a lot of hard work and time and effort in here from everyone. So, it comes live March, uh, May second? So, it'll be bombarded, May second will all be...
We'll watch those Google Analytics. Are there analytics on the current one?
No.
No, okay.
I have, I had some set, some set up for like the search, but, we weren't getting enough hits to get good results.
So, that'll actually show you how many people are going to it?
Yeah, and from where, I mean, they, it's very grand.
Is that what that means?
Yes.
The Google Analytics.
And, and the specific site, not just the town site, like, I mean, if they're going to the assessor's office, or what?
Correct, it'll tell us what, it'll tell us what page, it, with the, Google Analytics, you can actually follow a user, it'll, you'll, you'll be able to see where, where they land, and then where they go from there, and where they go from there, and where they go from there, not a specific user, but, but, no, not, not Nancy Nickerson, but, you can watch the patterns of users, yeah, so, and then you can get kind of an idea, and if you see a lot of them bounce off from a certain area, you can determine that something may be wrong there, and let them see why, and it's very, very detailed as to what you can, what you can get out of that data.